I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Review and approve the agenda. We have two additional items. There's a proposal for a part-time or off-season skating rink manager and a transfer of money with regard to the Beaver Pond account. Anything else? Anybody would like to add? Motion for that would be?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Review of our May 28 regular meeting. Any additions, corrections for that? Motion to approve the past eight minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Not seeing any, so... I have here as a guest the Sheriff Steve Barnard. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Would you like me back here or up there?
Well...
Grab a seat at the end of the table.
See that?
Or this end or that end.
Yeah.
No, probably better on that end. Better on the TV.
Oh.
I'm trying to hide on this side. Politician doesn't do panels, huh?
The first thing was on here is anything that you can fill us in on Neighborhood Watch?
Neighborhood Watch? Neighborhood Watch is a... I don't know how much research has been done on it. A national movement supported by the National Sheriff's Association. We have Lieutenant Jim Bennet, who's had some training in it, and we have one area currently, the town of Ira, who is involved in an active Neighborhood Watch. Basically, what we do with Neighborhood Watch is we... Neighborhood Watch is a grassroots community movement. It's nothing that the sheriff's office runs or controls. It's nothing that... I watched a PEG TV show at the last meeting, and they were talking about whether the select board ought to control it, shouldn't control it, shouldn't be a town-controlled function, it should be a grassroots community function. Now, the sheriff's office can obviously have representation on it. The select board should have representation on it because it's a metropolitan area town. Some of the things that the Neighborhood Watches don't do historically is they don't do patrol services. They don't go out to neighborhoods and patrol through neighborhoods and all that. Basically, and there's no uniforms, there's no car, nothing like that. Basically, what a Neighborhood Watch is, especially in today's world of social media and email and blogs and things like that, is it's a way of communicating with a lot of people about events that are going on in town, whether they're good events or bad events. As an example, probably 10 years ago now, we started a Neighborhood Watch group down in Wallingford. It initially started with probably 40 people on it. One of the causes to it, one of the challenges to it, I guess, is keeping everybody engaged and moving it forward. Because what we find happens is you get 20 or 30 people or 10 or 15 people that really, they want to do it, and then they start dropping off, and they're not replaced, and pretty quick you're down to a core of five or six, and you know, there's not a lot going on. So what we found out down in Wallingford was is if we created an email group, back then Facebook wasn't so hot, Twitter, I don't even know if Twitter exists, I'm not a tech person, so I don't tweet and all that stuff. So we started this email group, and we were exchanging information. One of the reasons we started it is there were some burglaries happening down in that end of the county. Long story short, we had the vehicle, a partial plate, and a description of the two people that were doing the burglaries when they were caught doing a burglary down near Bratton Borough on their way to Bratton Borough Court for burglaries. And they solved with it, when in fact, one of the individuals just in a paper the other day, when they got done talking with them and solved the burglaries, there were 151 burglaries that these guys did. And you know, we were right on the cusp of solving it. Now, how did we do that? We did that because somebody up on West Hill would post, "Hey, I saw something suspicious going on here," and it would go up to everybody. And somebody else would say, you know, "Or down by Elephant Lake." "Well, jeez, I saw the same kind of car down here." And then somebody would say something from Sugar Hill, "Yeah, you know, they just drove by me five minutes ago." So we would... The trick to it is to have engagement from law enforcement to get communication from law enforcement. So we put out, "Yeah, let's focus on this car." Well, that light lit everybody up, and everybody was watching for the vehicle. And like I say, we were within a days of getting a complete plate number and solving that case. Now, the cool part about that was we didn't have, of those 151 burglaries, a fair share of them were from Hottick County, about 103, the 103 corridor. We didn't draw one single burglary while we were working patrol in Wallingford because it was a... In fact, then it was a six-hour-a-week patrol. So we had basically nothing to do with these burglaries. So it wasn't like, you know, the sheriff's office is going to put this together, and we're going to go investigate all these burglaries all along. No. Those are all state police cases and everybody else's cases. So what happens is with a good Neighborhood Watch is that information comes in, and we push it out to whoever needs it. State police have a TIP program. It works similar, you know, it's not... I don't think that they've got as much community involvement as we had in that program down there. The program in Ira right now is still up and running. A fellow by the name of Rick Gallo is very active in that. If you know Rick, you know, he can give you some pointers on it. But basically, with Neighborhood Watch, what we do is we will provide whatever support you need, whatever education. We do classes on identity theft and telephone fraud and all that type of stuff, you know, that we would be willing to come in and give and put forward to the public. But it's really about everybody watching, and then instead of... Again, from the meeting on the 28th, there was somebody talking about good things on social media and bad information on social media. Basically, what this does is it keeps the information flow going with a group of people, but then we can look at state police cases or get state police information or whoever's information we need to, to get the bad information off, keep the good information going. I do that myself. One suggestion I would have is to start... I don't know if Proctor's got a Facebook group. West Rutland's got a very active Facebook group, and I monitor that all the time, you know, and somebody will put on there. In fact, there was just one the other day about a speeding problem, and we've had somebody addressing that speeding problem already. You know, it's just, it's a communication flow. It just, it works very, very, very well.
Yeah. I think way back when one of the programs started, I remember going to a meeting or two at your office, and I think that was Officer Bennet to...
No, that was Jeff Stevenson, who's now working for state police, and he's attached to a federal agency.
Yeah.
But that was a federal cops program grant that we got to see if we could energize this type of stuff countywide.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when West Rutland started. He put that together.
Any other questions on that? Yes, anybody?
Babe?
Yes.
Well, since it wouldn't be a town organization, but there would be a select board representative, and the sheriffs don't really operate it either, how would this play out if there's an invasion of privacy? I mean, how does that play out?
Well, there's... I guess, I guess, because there's, because there's no... It's not like Rutland City Tribe years ago, they put together a program called VIPS. It was volunteers in police service. And they actually provided people with jackets, and they would walk through neighborhoods. Neighborhood Watch has nothing to do with that. Absolutely nothing to do with that. Neighborhood Watch is an educational program, and it's a, and it's a way to get people... You probably realize, there's a, there's a core of people that are really serious about what's going on in their town. Those are the people that are in Neighborhood Watch. There's no... I guess there's really no way for anybody in that group to target anybody and say, you know, "I'm going to hit you for whatever," because it's not that type of a patrol program. Rutland City eventually disbanded their program because they had some folks with some agenda, and it just, it was, it was tough to manage, you know, so they decided there was other ways to do this. Like I say, Neighborhood Watch is basically communication between communities and police.
Okay. So how would that information be managed then? Because if we set up a Facebook site for it, you're going to encounter the good and the bad. I mean, bad information is going to be out there.
Sure. That would be done through a, through an administrator, and basically, and I... Because of our contract in West Rutland, you know, I try to keep up on that one. If I see some bad information coming out, either I'll post something that says, "Nope, this is off course." You know, "That burglary actually happened in Fair Haven. You know, it wasn't a West Rutland deal." Or, you know, lost dogs and all that type of stuff. It's, that's mainly what happens is that stuff gets passed around. The other one, the email group, is really much easier to manage, and today, there's... I would dare say probably 85% of the people have email, 80%? You know, and that's a much easier group to manage because then it's all, like I say, it's the people in the community that are really, they have time, they really want to take care of their community and are involved. And if something bad comes out and it's posted to the email group, down in Wallingford, the town administrator down there kind of, kind of reads through everything and makes sure that, you know, there's no bad information going on. And it's a real easy way for me. All I've got to do is send her an email and say, "Hey, now this is what's going on. We were down at the rec area, you know, and somebody was down there. If they're down there again, we'd like to hear about it." You know, that type of stuff.
So do you, do you know of any cases in which, like, since it's not really fully operated by anybody, in which there was an invasion of privacy problem that ended up being a town lawsuit or...
I don't know of any, no.
Okay.
No, I've been doing this for 41 years, and Neighborhood Watch has been around a majority of that, and I've never heard of it much.
Anyone else have... I'm just kind of curious. You get a call, or the administrator would call. And what database do they use to send all these things?
There isn't, really isn't one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there really isn't a database. There's, it's just, I don't know how the simplest way to explain it. It's just communication between everybody about what's going on. You know, if we've got something going on or somebody posted, if something happens at the Beaver Pond, and somebody says, you know, "I was driving by there, and there were, you know, two red cars and a white car and a bonfire, and people drinking beer, and it was 2:00 in the morning, and nobody came, and you know, whatever," that would get out to my patrol guys, which patrol guys may know. Somebody into red car and a white car, they get around together. That's how the problems get solved. A lot of quality of life issue problems get solved with Neighborhood Watch.
Yes. You have an hour fifty?
Yeah. We have a small web company. We have, we started a Facebook group, and it's, we, it's private, and it's just for the people who are in the town. So you have to basically be a resident here to be a member of this group and to post to it and to see it. And so that kind of is a good...
Can I get on that?
Yeah, that'd be a good form. Yeah, you would be probably the only person allowed if you're outside of...
Perfect.
Outside of... It's called I Live in Proctor.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll leave the address there on the bottom.
Sure.
Any questions from board?
I honestly don't see any concern with it being in place, because I think anything, anytime you start a group, it's going to be the advocates who want a safe town. So the people who are on it are going to be people who are just going to be not abusing it, but looking out for one another. And just like any, any cycle, whether it's Rutland, Proctor, people always will chime in with something that doesn't even have anything to do with it, but like you said, you have an administrator, they take it down, and you kind of keep, you know, kind of like siloing the important information that needs to get up there, so.
Well, I think back to a few months ago when we had the green tower that was going through town and causing all sorts of problems, and I Live in Proctor was kind of part of that, and the problem solved.
Right, right.
It's like putting a puzzle together. You know, he has a piece, he's got a piece, and somebody up here's got a piece, and you might not know each other, but if there's a central repository for that, and somebody's trying to put the pieces of the puzzle together, it makes things a... You know, like I say, you know, the major crime stuff, some of that's going to happen. There's just nothing you can do about it. But this is really, really good for quality of life issues and, you know, I mean, one of the things that Stan let me know about was people not picking up after their dogs. Okay, so you let me know about that. I let my patrol guy know about that, and if he sees it, he'll take care of it. But if I get an email that says, "Hey, you know, there's this guy that locks down Eaton Street every day, and his dog goes in the neighbor's lawn, and he doesn't pick it up, and it's at 12:30," I can fix that. That's easy.
Yeah.
But if I, but if, you know, we don't have a system set up so that that information gets to us, it gets frustrating on the selectmen's side and on the citizen's side because, you know, where are they? Why aren't they here? Look them. You've got to have that back and forth.
Now, if I understand correctly, this is a dedicated Neighborhood Watch Facebook site?
No. No. I'm just telling you, West Rutland set up a Facebook site, and that's how a lot of information gets passed around there.
And that's strictly, that's all it's for is so-called Facebook?
Yeah, it's West Rutland families or something like that, yeah. And Wallingford has an email group that they use.
So they're just communicating with themselves?
Right.
On the email group?
Right. And she may pull stuff off and put it in front of our forum or whatever. Doesn't happen very often.
You know, it really takes somebody independent of the board here to really push this and get it going in neighborhoods or town if that's what they want to do.
Yeah, if there's folks that are arrested, you know, I mean, let me know, and we can, we'll coordinate a meeting. We can have a meeting at my office, or we can have a meeting here, whatever, and I'll have Lieutenant Bennet come over and tell you what, you know, how they got the thing running in Ira. Maybe we'll have Rick Gallo come to it, and tell the ups and downs and sideways of it.
Sure. Yeah, there's no set way.
No set way to do it. It's not a crack and gutter program, not at all.
I went and looked, I Googled it, and my gosh, you could, it could take you, if you read every, everything that's on the internet about it, it would take you days to go through.
There's a difference between setting up a Neighborhood Watch in a town in Proctor and setting up a Neighborhood Watch in a neighborhood in Philadelphia.
Yes.
Big difference, you know?
Yes.
You can have community events. You can do fundraising if you want. You can buy signs. I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff you can do. But how individual program tailors this up?
We've got an item on here about expanded coverage. Now, you know, there was some talk about, at our last meeting about, oh, having somebody, you know, in town, you know, 24/7, and...
We'll do that.
Yeah, sure.
Ching.
And then we can put the bankruptcy sign.
That will cost you. I just did some quick figures, and basically I took the hourly rate times 168, which is the number of hours in a week, times 52, and it comes up to $279,000 plus equipment.
Right.
Plus equipment, three cars, four months, well, actually a total of 16 months worth of training to get new people in and get them trained up. You know, it's a, it's an expensive process. There's no, there's no giving around that. There's no giving around that.
Yes. No, and I just don't think that that's something needed. When you provided that report to us, I think Stan gave it, sent it out to us, oh, a month or two ago.
Did I send it to you? I meant to. I just can't remember whether I did.
Or maybe it just...
Was your court filling that component in?
Yeah, along the course.
It was just a couple, it was only like three weeks ago because it was last, since that was meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I've got it here if you guys want to take a look at it.
If you look at that, there's nothing on there at all that warrants a full-time...
And I ran, I ran the state police numbers. I can't share with you, you know, the NID grid yet because that's their system, but they had, they had for the same period 57 cases over here that range from, you know, littering complaint to domestics to more serious, a couple more serious things.
Yeah. So when you look over a long period of time, that we really haven't had anything, and unfortunately, we had two, three things kind of grouped close together, and I don't know as... They certainly all wouldn't have been cleared up by having somebody available 24/7. I just don't believe it.
I can tell you, in the Florence Road incident, BSP did come to us for cruiser camera video because the end mechanic was working over there.
Yeah.
You know, so that's, I mean, you're right. Those types of things are not indicative of a social problem in your community. They're indicative that your community was used at the end of a crime.
Yeah.
How do you stop that?
Yes.
Tough. That's tough.
Yes.
I think one of the things was response time. Is there, you know, between sheriff department and state police, game orders, what does it take and what can we expect on the jump timer in 24-hour period of response?
I can, I can't speak directly for state police. I can tell you what state police lieutenants have said when I've been at different select board meetings with them. They, they will come with us, and you know, when we have a town that's interested in coverage, and we'll talk, you know, which is better, which is pros and cons on that. The state police lieutenants that I've been to select board meetings have always said, "You can call us for whatever complaint you have, and we will prioritize the complaint with everything else that's going on in the county. And if your complaint is not high priority, and there's other high priority complaints," which is basically the same thing that we'll tell you, you know, "Your priority complaints are here, the smashed mailbox is here." The smashed mailbox, a lot of times, creates a lot more emotion than this case. Get that. You know, but sometimes there's a, there's a lag. With the cooperative patrol between West Rutland and Proctor, okay, we cover 80 hours a week in the two towns. Each town gets its own independent 40 hours a week on average every week. Now, if you call, and the guys in, I don't know, Whippa Hollow Road in West Rutland, and there's a complaint, it's going to take them 15, 20 minutes to get here. You know, that's just travel time. If you call, and the guy's doing casework in the office, it's going to take him 15 or 20 minutes to get here. If you call, like somebody did in, nooo, West Rutland, about a month ago, the guy that was having a heart attack and was down on the ground and not breathing, the deputy was there within three or four minutes and revived and brought him back. You know, so it's just a, it's a, it's a combination of what's going on, where the guy is, whether we're on or state police are on. That all figures into response time with calls. Now, I can run, if you want, I believe, I've never done it with our Valphar program, but I think I can run an average response time to a call for you. Some of them are going to be, you know, it's very rare that it's the next day. You know, we've had some where there's been a, been a lag. The other thing that happens sometimes is if it's a non-emergency call, and you call the state police or you call 911, and they determine it's a non-emergency call, they'll hold that call until we come on duty, simply because it's, it's just, it takes away from their workload. So that does happen.
Yeah.
You know, but response times to calls, I mean, it's a covered big area with the cooperative patrol. Now, effectively, you get 80 hours worth of coverage for 40 hours worth of fee. But there's a, there's a price on the other end of that. You know, we may be over there when we're needed here, vice versa.
Yeah, if somebody's in the middle of a case, they can't drop it and run somewhere else.
If they're in the middle of casework, here's what I tell my guys. I tell them two things to begin with. I tell them, my philosophy is at the end of the day, solve the problem. If the problem needs an arrest, arrest it. If it needs a ticket, ticket it. If it doesn't, you know, if it needs dealing with a health officer, we've dealt with John before over here, you know, dealing with a health officer to cure a problem, or dealing with DCF, or dealing with whoever, fix the problem at the end of the day. The other thing I tell them is that if there's a call in town and you're in the office doing casework, you leave the office doing casework, and you go take care of the call. We, our philosophy is that if somebody calls the sheriff's office or the sheriff's office gets a complaint, the complainant gets a uniform at the door. You know, they don't get a phone call and say, "Hey, you know, we're too busy. We're going to come over next Tuesday." You know, they get a uniform at the door. We've been pretty successful. Any agency, we do 6,000 complaints a year, you know, and any agency that's busy like that, you know, is going to have a few that just fall through the cracks. It happens. But I think, I think Stan will tell you, we're pretty responsive to, to that when it happens. I don't think we've missed a first day in school for...
Bruce, can I say something?
Yes.
Wish I was a health officer, which, you know, I'll tell you something. They were very nice to me when I made a phone call. The dispatcher would say, "Is this an emergency, John? Do you need someone right off the bat?" I mean, I got a guy in West Rutland. He can be there if you need. I've worked with these guys, and I'll tell you something. They were very nice, and when I needed something, they were there. I can't say anything else. You guys did a wonderful job, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, because when I needed you on different things, the dispatcher was very nice, and he said, "I'll have a guy meet you there at your property at such and such a time," and they were there. All right, thank you. Thank you, dude.
Bruce, could I ask my question?
Yeah.
What's the protocol for dialing 911? If I dial 911, who do I get? Who gets what?
If you dial 911, your initial call is going to go to Westminister, state police, to the peace app down there. If they're busy, it'll get transferred up to Williston. If they're busy, then it goes to one of, I think, four other peace apps in the state. So you have something going on if you call 911, and you give them the complaint over the phone. If the dispatcher triages that complaint, and it is a life or death, a true life or death situation, she will dispatch anybody that's in the area to that call. She's agree. If it's a car accident with injuries, say, you know, there's a, there's a, that's an emergency call. She will look. Every, what we do every night is we send state police our schedule for the next day, and they have that right there beside, right on their desk. So if it's a Proctor call, she'll look and say, "Okay, the sheriff's office is in, it's 9:00 at night. Sheriff's office is in Proctor at 9:00 tonight." So she will flip that call to my office, and we'll dispatch a deputy up to it. State police will back us up. If we're not here, if we're not on duty, then the state police will take that call. So when you dial 911, if it's a... So when you dial nine-one-one, if it's a, if, and I noticed this from the meeting, there was a lady that had a question about it. If you have whatever you perceive as an emergency, call nine-one-one. I don't care whether it's a fire, you need an ambulance, or you need a policeman, or the cat's at the top of the tree and you think it's an emergency, call nine-one-one. If you have, you know, if there's a, you know, I get up in the morning and there's sixteen beer bottles in my flower bed, call our office, you know, because we'll, we'll come up and we'll take care of that. You know, at the very least, we'll collect up the beer bottles and go away for you, you know, but we'll take care of that and do the best that we can to figure out what's going on. Those are quality of life stuff.
Thank you.
You'll do anything for a nickel, then.
Six cents if you bring it in the right place.
Can I ask a question? I'm not sure it's necessarily like a twenty-four-seven operation that we're looking for, but I was reviewing like the logs that we have since like January, but we have, it kinda seems to go in a two-week period. And it seems like some weeks we have hundred, hundred and ten hours in a two-week period, some weeks we have like fifty hours in the two-week period. And sometimes we call and, you know, you're out of hours, so you can't get someone here, so...
Excuse me just a second, if that happens, let me know.
Okay.
That happened, I spoke to that at the last meeting.
Okay.
I, I called Stan and we were told you were out, we were out of hours till no one came.
Do you remember when that was?
Uh, yeah, I can tell you exactly. It was the opening, opening miner's ballgame.
Okay, I'll get together with you afterwards and I'll figure that out.
So I'm not necessarily thinking that it's like we need a twenty-four-seven operation, but we have weeks that we might not see anybody at all, so...
Unless somebody is out sick for a week or they're on vacation, there's somebody here every day. There's somebody responsible for here every day, every day. And the other thing, in fact, I was just talking to my dispatch supervisor about this because again, I watched the meeting on the twenty-eighth before I came here and reviewed a whole bunch of stuff with a couple of people. If you have a call, if you have a problem and you call my office and you say, look, I need somebody here, they will do one of two things. They'll either flip it to state police or they'll get my duty officer. We've always got somebody on the command staff that's on call or working. And a lion's share of the time, what we'll do is we'll pull a patrol guy from somewhere else and send them over. Because, and this is why, and I, a couple of guys on the board here have heard this before. We're a vendor of police services. You're our customer. We wanna keep you happy because we're not tax-based, we're contract-based. If, if we lose patrol contracts, we lose positions and actually it's like a business. So customer service, my guys, when I hire a new guy, after about ten months, they come in and say, how come you say customer service so much? And I have to explain it to them because we're in the customer service business. We're not tax-based law enforcement. Nothing against them. Sometimes I wish I was. You know, but customer service-based law enforcement says you take care of your people. Quality of life issues are important. People not picking up after their dogs are important, speeding complaints are important, and parking complaints are important. Those four, if I could solve those four things, boy, I'd be a millionaire. I'd sell out and do it.
We have copies of the contract. We really haven't had the chance to look at it, so. Any quick questions? Anybody? I think maybe this is something we can...
Table.
Yeah, table for the meeting, the next one?
Comfort.
I believe that's the twenty-eighth.
It's gonna be July.
Forty-four.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. And again, if you have any questions on the contract, you can call. If you have your cell phone number, call me and we'll go through it.
Yeah.
Is this the same word you used last year?
The only thing I changed in there was the figures.
Next meeting's twenty-four.
Fireman?
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Yeah. Okay, well.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you very much for coming over and...
So. That accordance I passed by, a draft vote pending and started for comment, and I've included a number of the things that they've had before.
Okay.
As far as location of stop signs and where the streets are. That's it. One, let's ask a question on standing vehicles. Parking, standing, or stopping?
When, when I look at it, it's parking. If, and, and I dealt with these before where people will pull up in front of a store and let their people out and they go in the store and they go shopping and they're in there for twenty minutes and they say, hey, you gotta move your car, and they go, oh, it's standing. No, your car, move. You know, if somebody, if somebody's got a, you know, a wrong bag of groceries into their mother's house and it's right on the front or on the sidewalk, they're gonna be there five minutes. Parking, parking and standing is tough.
Parking, standing?
King Street.
And stopping are all the same thing in the ordinance?
King Street is a tough one because you park cars on the side of the road up there, you're blocking traffic. But the cars are parked legally. That's a tough, that's a tough area.
That's one of the things to put into our ordinance.
Yeah.
No parking.
And you hate to tell people they can't park in front of their house, but sometimes you have to.
If they're encroaching into the travelway, by definition, you know, the statute talks about the travelway, which is eleven feet either side of the middle of the road. Anybody that's within that is in violation of the statute?
That's the discussion.
Yeah.
The other one is within so many feet of an intersection.
Right.
Is that in statute too?
Uh, fifty feet, I believe.
Fifty?
I believe there's two or three. Yep, so I'll be good.
You have to have signs?
Yes.
You have to have signs?
If you want, well, it depends on how you want to enforce it. If you want to enforce it through a municipal parking ticket, you're gonna be the, you're gonna be the judge and jury on it, so, but if you're gonna enforce it with a state traffic ticket, yeah, the judge is gonna want signage. Gonna wanna know how we notify the people that this is the law.
They can't be just in the ordinance, we gotta have a physical sign?
Yeah, that would be like saying all speeds are thirty-five miles an hour and not passing them. Just assuming everybody knows that, yeah. If you need me to come back at the next meeting, talking about anything like that, let me know. I'll be back in a few, okay?
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, good stuff. I, of course, like to congratulate our new graduates at the school. Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah, so it's great to, to see, see the numbers and... They should be proud. They've made it.
Yes.
And onward and upward.
Absolutely.
And I wanna thank you, Bruce and Tom, for coming to my classroom last week and watching my kids present some projects so they get some authentic feedback. They really appreciated that and they really enjoyed it.
That helps you.
Appreciate you guys taking my time.
Yes.
They're very well prepared.
Yes, they had some great ideas and they've done, gone through an apparent checklist down through and seemed to have everything, you know, covered.
I was very proud.
Yes. Yes, it's good to see kids doing that rather than just something out of a book or... Gave them a little hands-on.
Even if they weren't hard changes, though.
Right. Things have changed. I know, you, you put that picture and sent it to me just to get my reaction. Well, we're a little ahead of our hearing, so keep on going, yes.
Well, I have good stuff up here, John.
Sure.
Bay Ruth games will start here in Proctor and the first home Bay Ruth game is Monday the seventeenth. There's a home game Thursday the twentieth, Tuesday the twenty-fifth, Thursday the twenty-seventh. Monday, July first, Saturday, July sixth, and Thursday, July eleventh. And the games are at five-thirty unless they're on the weekend and then they're in the lobby. And we're the defending Rutland County Bay Ruth champs.
Okay.
I most played it down.
They played at the high school.
High school.
Okay. Highway Department, Stan.
Yes, I'm sorry that it was on the table. You didn't have a chance to read it ahead of time. However, we've been going through the number of vacations with different people and John took a few days off last week and couldn't get it to make it. Again, they're, you have their vacation, yeah, but they lose it at the end of the year, at the end of July, June. But what they were, they did a considerable amount of work up the pool. Brought in sand from the beach, working on the drainage. And as volunteers have been working with the committee in redoing some of the docks, so. That's been one push to get that back and ready. Pod holes are always an issue and they continue to go through them. They're using hot mix now, whether it's the old cold mix or it should last longer when they put them in. Mowing, I've got it listed twice because they were catching up the first part of the two-week period and now they're doing it back on the regular schedule. Lower Grove Street is a drainage issue that we are getting grant and aid money from, from the state to put it in. That has to be done by the end of June, so there'll be a push on that to get it going. Boutique tire rotation for the truck. Mulch air, they were out mulching a lot of swats where they had done cloud damage and get that done. Willow Street Pump Station and that falls under the wastewater item, but it's still seeing tremendous flow. And highway guys have been helping out down there to try to find out where the problem is. They did find on Gorham Bridge Road, the one, one-way section, the TV and manhole upstream and fountain water gushing into the pipe, so there's a broken pipe there. Trouble with that is it's so saturated as far as digging, so they're still watching. That pump station is getting a big overload this year. We are no longer disch, I should say that for wastewater, but we're no longer discharging to the stream, so we've stopped doing that. But anyway, they've jumped in and helped on that project. Street signs and stop signs, not only were the east street ones gone, but there were some also on Gorham Bridge Road. It was top sign missing in a couple places.
Well, on the way here, the yield sign going north in the triangle.
Is that gone?
Yeah. I just noticed it up way here.
Beaver Pond brush. Volunteers have been cutting it down and they've been hauling it away to get it done. Volunteers. Yes. Catch basin on Grove and Olympus, that's further one up and that's what they're doing in preparation for Paving Olympus all the way through. Ice and North Street side drainages to five corners. You may have seen some hay over there. Hopefully they get it so it doesn't erode out quite as much as it has in the past. Storm drainage down on twenty-six fifty-one. There was a pile of rocks in the front lawn. The guys went down and cleaned it up just like we did the rocks in other people's lawns. And again, ton weight mowing and trimming and trying to keep everything as neat and clean as we can. For pending stuff, root side brush, that's been on the agenda, but now we're getting leafed out and it's a little more difficult to do it than it was then, but it's more visible. You can see where you can't see. Grove Street drainage, which I mentioned up above, to get that done. And sanitary store, going into the storm drains, when they built these sewers back in the seventies on West Street, they left two connections, they left three connections to the old storm drain, the old sewer lammers, they turned into a storm drain. We corrected one, we've got two more to correct. They were not die-tested and yes, when you flush the toilet, it ends up in the storm drain. So those be done before the first of June. Street sweeping, I think they're almost done. Keep cleaning up the gravel down the curb streets, which are the ones with problems. No overtime in the last two-week period. Any questions?
We're all equipped to do roadside mowing here, for sure.
Yes. They usually do that three times a year.
John?
I would like to ask the board, are we mowing the town property or are we mowing other people's property? I would like to ask the board.
Which piece of property are you talking about?
Oh, a good example is coming in from Rutland on the highway. There's a piece of strip that I see it's been mowed all the way down through. Just ask the question. I mean, I'd like to have, I'd like to have a farm mowed by Mary Fagolsi. That belongs to the pool. I think that belongs to the town.
Where are you talking, where are you talking about this business?
When you come into Proctor, the old roof.
Yeah.
All right, you do, you mow that square. And if you look on the side of the road, they're mowing down the side of the road. I mean, that's the highway.
I still don't know where you're...
Well, you go by it a few days, you're gonna be willing.
The, if I may, the...
I asked the board.
Yeah, they, they aren't out there mowing. The piece of lawn or the piece of ground on the west end of North South Street Extension is mowed by a private citizen. The mowing alone, South Street Extension is done as a private individual. The piece that is at the north end of South Street Extension, the town does mow that one as well as the little area where the sign is.
Well, I disagree with this thing. I saw John call his board.
He was mowing it with his own mower. That's what I'm told.
I'm not gonna get there.
Yeah, so I see you don't have them all.
It builds a day. I mean, that's the question. I'm asking the board, do we mow the town property? Or do we move other sections that don't belong to the town? Cause that's...
Not that I'm aware of.
No, we're not aware of any. Okay. And one more thing on Pine Street. You go by Pine Street, that loop on Pine Street, I think where what's his name, Joe lives, you go down the hill and there's two big branches. I mean, you can hit the roof of his truck if you don't come through there.
Two big branches which are from a tree that's on Obia's...
Trees are right over the road where the sewer pump station is, right there in that shop corner. There's two big branches that're bleeding right over the road. They should be taken down.
They're over the town road?
Yes.
Those trees are...
Can't miss it.
Those trees are on Obia's property. There were two limbs that came down earlier this spring. Our highway crew pushed them off the road, back onto the private property and they're still there. But you say there's two more that are...
I mean, you have the right to cut them down if they're over the void line.
We do?
Yes.
We have the right or responsibility to clean it up if they fall in the road, but we're not gonna cut it till it falls.
If you've got tree limbs hanging over your property, you can cut them on the line.
We're not going to.
You're not gonna cut it? Okay.
When they come down, we'll handle them. But they're not damaging, they're not threatening the road. We're not, and they're on private property. Until they threaten the road, it's not our responsibility.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
And this is, how's it doing, our property, or it was in front of our property? We, we have a little waterfall area down... We, we have a little waterfall area down, we're on, on, down on East Street, down toward the end and there's like water that comes down the hillside and it's been remedied a little bit. But there's a, a bunch of, uh, like straw netting that's all over the grass down there and it's all grown up now. I was, is it okay for me to go ahead and pull that up or is there somebody gonna come and pull that up? I was, kind of didn't know the town was gonna take care of that or if I had to pull that, pull that up. I'd like to get that node down there sometime soon or.
I believe they were down there and cleaned up where the, had the washout or reef was in. They cleaned that out, but you're talking about the number.
But they put some stuff there to plant some grass and, and this like netting, this straw netting stuff and it's still, the straw netting stuff is still laying down there and the grass is all kind of growing up around it. I kind of was wanting to, it's okay for me to go ahead and pull that up or if somebody's gonna come and pull that up? Or what, what the protocol is, what am I supposed to do?
Clean it up.
You mow it, right?
You just mow it?
You, you mow that area.
Yeah.
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 And it catches into your blade.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be biodegradable and go right into the.
The netting's gonna catch up in the blade of the mower though.
It's supposed to be just.
Really?
Kind of string that's, you know.
Okay.
Breaks down in time.
All right.
Which, which, what house is yours?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six? So it's out past, uh, Williams Street?
Yeah, last on, on the right, they're gonna come down.
So, yeah, they cleaned out the ones that are long and side to side a lot, but you just assume and see them clean out the ones where you are too.
Oh, we can do it too.
We can do it. I was just wondering, so, yeah, I don't wanna mess with.
It's just there to try to keep the soil in place until the seed grows.
Okay.
We didn't want to remove it, you guys didn't want us to do it.
Okay. Um, anything on the storm damage?
Still waiting for a declaration from disaster.
Yep.
And I expected to see it before now. If he does, then we will start putting in our invoices and asking for payment.
What's the cost of the storm damage? What's the cost of the storm damage?
Uh.
You shoot out of my mouth.
Yeah, I've got the numbers, but I don't have them on the top of my head. We have two of them. One was Williams Street, the other was, uh, Olympus that we contracted out for. A total of both of those is less than eighteen thousand. Then we got a bunch of our own time involved in it, which I haven't added up because we do that when, uh, we submit the application.
Okay, um, we've got, uh, the two meetings coming up here Wednesday night. The North Street Railroad Bridge, uh, meeting, uh, at six, six o'clock Wednesday, uh, here at the library. And the Beaver Pond Path Public Meeting, uh, will follow at six-thirty. So if anyone is interested, uh, come down and, uh, with any questions or, or listen to the presentation from the state and our engineers.
Yeah, I have talked with all the property owners on the Beaver Pond Project. Uh, the state will be meeting with all of the property owners in the afternoon on Wednesday the twelfth as far as rights away, before they come over to the meeting. So they are meeting with all the property owners there.
Did you see this made the news this morning on WCAX? It was, uh.
Yes.
A news clip about, about both meetings here. I thought that was kind of cool.
I remember seeing that before.
Yeah.
BPR had the, uh, Beaver Pond Path TD.
And it talked about both of them on WCAX this morning, one and then the other. And they had the location and everything, so I thought that was pretty good, uh, notification this day.
But they have covered yet?
Yeah.
Yes, and it was on WSYB on their news, uh, this morning also.
And I will call a special meeting to the select board, just so you are officially meeting.
Yeah.
Not that you're gonna make any decision, but.
On that night?
On that night.
I can't be here 'cause I have a, um, parks and.
All right. You go to that one, I'll just, but anyway, it's just, there won't be a special meeting, just so we can.
And I'm meeting with the fire department, I want to say this.
Okay.
So there's one.
There's nobody from being here.
I'll be here.
It's still gonna be a forum, I'm afraid.
Yes, there's three of us.
I just wanted to warn it as a special meeting.
Yeah, just to, to cover, so.
Well, if there's three, then that is a special.
Yeah. So, I, uh. We've got, uh, weekends. What have, I don't know, we've got about five minutes out of, uh, but they're.
Let me throw one more in on highway. I came back from the Southern Beach Springfield paving. They look to Olympus on August fifth to start grinding on Orangey Avenue. We're following up the paving after that, which is good because the money's not available till after first of July.
Okay, uh, whether we want to, uh, couple, a couple of minutes. I see the sheriff, this is here and, uh, but whether anybody with a dog thing. Let's see if we can cover a, a couple of things. A motion to go in the board of water commissioners?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, okay.
I think, you know, the, again, Simon's report, I didn't receive until this morning, so you can go apologize on your cable.
Yep.
I think the big issue in here is the variable frequency drive on the well pump, which had to be replaced. And that's only been there for forty, five years now.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's nothing we can do. Again, we brought the auxiliary back online again, so there was no interruption service because we didn't affect the water quality. There was no need for a well water notice on that.
So, um, that, we have no idea on the delivery of that, then.
It's, it's over to you.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, they've got it done.
Oh, okay.
We've got that on this committee.
Okay, okay. Any other questions on the Simon's report? Uh. Contract six, uh, I believe you said we hadn't heard back from the state.
Yeah, I got one email saying it has been assigned to one of their reviewers.
Yep.
Patrick Spark, who is one who has done all of our own M manuals review, so he ended up doing that. Uh, so I'm not sure what's the timing on it is.
Yes.
But it's, it's here.
Okay, uh, I didn't see anything on our delinquent, but, uh.
The only thing that I put in your packet was the letter that we.
Yes.
Hand out when we turn the water off. Usually they knock on the door, if the person is there, they hand them the letter and walk out and they turn the candle. Uh, this particular instance, we had one turn off today. Shut off. Uh, the lady was not overly happy. They knocked on the door and they didn't get an answer, so they went and turned it off and put the notice on the door. Uh, she came down to the office, met with Rota and wrote a contract. They were to check the five hundred dollars in Rota contract for two hundred a month to clean it up. I wouldn't be surprised if we're not back to that location again, uh, a month from now. But what she did is she got a checklist and everybody in May was taking care of what exceptional one. So now it's June, at the end of June, she'll go through her checklist and see if everybody has made their payments.
What are we gonna do the second time around?
The second meeting, she's got it turned on now because she came out to pay. If she doesn't pay in June, we'll go turn it off again.
And then what do we do?
Wait for her to come back, is it?
Yeah.
Then she pays a month, then we wait a month to turn it off again.
Yeah. If she misses, if she misses it in the month of June. Well, actually, she signed her agreement today, so she is in June. So she's paid, so-called paid for June. So if she misses July, then we'd be back to shut it off. But I expect that on the middle of July, we'll be sending out new shut offs because of delinquencies that have happened this year and the ones at the bottom of the heap that we didn't send out to last year.
So can we have a list of those for our next meeting, please?
List of the ones that have contracts?
List of ones where, that are currently under contract and where they're at and then the list of the next round that is gonna be shut.
Okay, so, yeah, you won't have, you'll have the list of those that are at contracts. You won't have the list of the next round of shut offs, cause that's gotta wait till after.
How about the ones that are in jeopardy that are, you know?
I can give you the list of.
Yeah.
And the ones who were delinquent last year in two thousand eighteen, who are, and again, delinquent issues, they have two years of delinquency. I can give you the ones that were delinquent last year. And I doubt if they will be in to pay off before the end of this year.
Right. We've got a few more days to, on that, so. Anything else for?
Just a quick question. Is the delinquency on its way up or is it on its way down?
Excuse me, Joe?
Delinquency, is it on its way up or is it on its way down?
It's on its, well, it's on its way down because we have a lot of people who have signed agreements.
Yeah, okay.
The question is whether they make the payments on those signed agreements.
But if you add that in even, is, is the problem worse or better?
Better. It's, it's, you know, if they keep, well, if they don't make the payment, we go shut them off and then they are back in to see us. So what we've got now is everybody who is on the agreement, if they miss a payment, we just walk out and shut it off. We don't have to wait for thirty days, we don't have to do it on a specific time period.
Question, so that money goes back into the water and sewer, am I correct? It doesn't go in the general fund?
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Okay.
What was that? Okay, um, that's. I have a minute or two after seven, so let's return to the regular select board and.
You're, you're calling a dog hearing together?
Yes, right, we're calling the dog hearing, uh, together.
What are the order?
Okay, um, the, the select board has received a report from Rutland County Sheriff's Department relating to a complaint from residents living on Gibb Street of two German shepherd dogs owned by Alexander and Tina Maranville and are frequently running at large and acting aggressively towards neighboring adults and children. The select board, in accordance with the Town of Proctor Animal Control Ordinance, is serving notice that it will hold an animal complaint hearing at seven o'clock on Monday, June tenth, twenty nineteen, at the Proctor Free Library, four Main Street, Proctor, Vermont, oh-five-seven-six-five. The Rutland County Sheriff's Department conducted an investigation into the complaint and a copy of the report can be obtained at the town office at forty-five Main Street, Proctor, Vermont, oh-five-seven-six-five. At the hearing on June tenth, the select board will evaluate the matter to determine if the complaint against the dogs can be sustained, sustained. If the complaints are sustained, the owner will be fined in accordance with Article nine, section three of the ordinance, inappropriate orders to protect persons domesticated, domestic animals and pets will be issued by the select board, posted June sixth, twenty nineteen, Town of Proctor Select Board.
Just to note one typo in the next to the last line, instead of inappropriate, should be inappropriate. Where's D D type?
Um, yeah. Okay, um. I don't see the, the people involved, uh, here, so. Starting? Yes, so, um, would you, uh, take over?
All right, so we have had numerous involvements with the address at twenty-two Gibb Street as owned by Alexander and Tiana Maranville. They are the owners of two fairly young, I'd imagine, German shepherds. Um, at this point, I do not believe that either of them are successfully registered with the town. The last that I spoke with Stan and, um, the town clerks, the one had been paid for but hadn't had their vaccination records supplied at the time when they came in to pay for the licensing. The second one is fairly new and they have done nothing to get that taken care of. Within the last twelve months, as written by the town ordinance, um, we've been tracking a numerous number of cases involving the dogs being at large within the town, primarily in the area of Gibb Street and other residences on Gibb Street. Uh, during that time, we've tracked approximately six different cases that we started based off of animal complaints in that area, um, each which I printed was given to the select board. Each case printed out is as printed out from our VAUDB or database system and lists basically the caller who was involved with that and, um, who the primary officer of the response was. Some of these cases are mine, some of them are also Sergeant Carter's. So we both have been dealing with this, we've both been looking into these and handling and speaking with the complainants as the reports come in. The way that the sergeant and I generally handle animal problems within the town is, the way I generally handle it at least, is on a first complaint that we get from somebody about a dog running at large, we locate the owners and I have a conversation with them about exactly what the ordinance is, what it states, where they can get a copy of it if they'd like. And at that point, I usually issue them a verbal warning and log it in the case as you've been notified of what the statute is, you've been notified how you violated it and that if you happen to violate it again, a, is you typically issued for a municipal ordinance violation. Again, I tell them exactly where they can get that. If I have a chance, I even sometimes will provide a copy of the ordinance if I have a chance to get one printed out prior to meeting with them for the first time. The second time I go back, that's pretty much the, you've had a warning, you violated it a second time, here's the issuance of the ticket for offense number one. At which point, when the ticket is written, it does get logged in the case and the ticket is supplied to the Vermont Judicial Bureau and handled similarly to a traffic violation that you get for a motor vehicle complaint. From there, we handle it basically according to town statute and to the nature and response of the caller. There are some complaints that we get where the callers don't wish to provide us with sworn-up statements. If I don't witness the violation, I can't issue a ticket on it because it goes to the judicial bureau as a contested ticket. The judge would basically ask, who observed the violation and basically can testify to the actions of the animal question. If I can't testify to it, I can't stand behind the ticket. So there are times that we do have cases in Proctor where the complainants do not wish to issue us with a statement as to what they observed. If they do do that, they are the ones that if the ticket is contested, have to come to court to testify to the violation. In this case, we've had some pretty good callers and plaintiffs and I think just about every time that we've dealt with them for a ticket, I've gotten the, written a statement from people willing to back the ticket now. I know that in the first, I believe, case or two, it was a verbal warning that was issued out. I believe I issued the first one and I believe Sergeant Carter might have issued the second one just based off of the complaint. I can't really speak to why, you know, he would do what he would do. But I believe that they got two warnings verbally without a ticket. From that case on, we've had three prior or subsequent complaints, all of which have had tickets issued. Uh, the third ticket was issued just at the end of May and was offense number three within the twelve-month period defined by the statute for the ordinance. I've made contact with them, I've issued out the three tickets myself, based on cases of mine and Sergeant Carter's, but I have the issuing officer. The response that I've gotten from these folks is not what I would consider overly contrite or positive. Pretty much it's the, oh, yep, here's your, yep, we'll take our ticket. ticket, yeah, have a nice day. They're aware of the issues and the issues have continued. I submitted in with these, the case that I put all to you guys, the written statements as issued out by some of the neighboring residents on Kane Street. Uh, one of the more prevalent ones is Francis Okeoturo, uh, he's had numerous incidences with these dogs. The dogs have not been openly aggressive in that they've actually bitten somebody yet, but they've been putting people at fear of aggression. A lot of it, I think, is going to come down to a perception thing of if you're a big dog person, you might go to, oh no, that dog's being happy, just wants to come over and play. If you don't know the dog and you're not a big dog person, it's going to be your perception of the incident that's going to drive how you react and how you feel about it. Everybody I've talked to at theirs had the feeling that these dogs have not been aggressive and have not bitten somebody yet, but definitely could be depending on certain circumstances. Uh, I know that at one point, um, Miss Okeoturo stated that she needed to feel that she put garbage cans between herself and these dogs in order to keep them away from her so that she did not get bitten. I have, uh, similar statements from the Bombards who live at twenty-one Gibb Street and they have had similar incidences themselves and they also witnessed an incident, um, that if you wish, I actually have in my email that I could play on my phone for the select board of the video that they took of a gentleman that lives on Primary Street, right across from Primary Street from the Morango residence, where the young man is out, well, working with his bicycle, the two dogs came up barking at him and he needed to place the bicycle between himself and the dogs to make sure that the dog stayed a distance away from him and shouldn't get to him. As I said, if you wish to see that, you have it on my phone, I wasn't able to get it onto a disc, um, for easier playing. I have statements from the Bombards, they said they saw that from a window and they said that the dogs appeared to be aggressive because they ran right up to the guy barking and he needed to put himself behind the barrier in order to keep the dog away from him. Based on these issues, I did speak with Christie Cludy of the Proctor Elementary School in regards to the issue, to see what her opinion on it was, to see if she had any concerns about kids walking to and from school. She states that she absolutely has these concerns because kids walk to and from school every day and some of them are fairly young kids. If a kid gets bitten, it's going to be a problem and we're all going to hear from the parents as to what happened, why were the dogs loose? And it basically, it'll be a full investigation as to the nature of why this child was bitten. The dogs haven't seemed to leave the area of Gibb Street yet, but I said Principal Cludy was concerned enough that during one incident, she stated that she would consider actually holding kids inside for recess if the dogs were known to be in reported to the schools being outside and on the loose. The school does not reside that far away from where these dogs do, all it would take for them to do is hear the kids are playing, walk down the street and then they got dogs running loose on school property. Hasn't happened yet, but she does have concerns that it could happen. And I know that, I think it happened before my time, but I think there was an incident in the past with dogs at the school playground. I think someone got bitten in that instance, if I remember correctly, from what I've heard from the town. So it has happened in the past, she does have concerns and after that meeting, I did speak with Stan and basically pass that along to him and tell him that we were looking into the issue and going to keep a closer eye on what these dogs are doing. Since then, we have had other new reports that have come in. At this point, we have issued ticket number three and like I said, the response from the owners is not the response that would lead me to believe that this is going to be a corrected issue. At this point, I'm basically coming before the select board to see if we can look at what other options we might be able to have in getting these dogs under control, because I don't believe that issuing a municipal ticket time and time again is going to rectify the problem. And really at that point, it's only a five. If they don't want to pay it, they can deal with the Traffic Bureau on an unpaid traffic ticket, but at the end of the day, I don't believe that it's going to solve our problem here. At this point, we are really looking at getting this wrapped up before somebody gets bitten. Because that would be, it'll be a problem for probably all of us if somebody gets bitten, especially with it being, you know, a lot of kid traffic in that area. If you guys would like any other specific example, like I said, we can go through the cases case by case if you'd like, um, if not, it's a lot of, like I said, all the information is logged in the case, you guys do have our case narratives in each of these that basically is a typed up report, um, as to what happened and exactly what all the details are that we asked.
So I think if they haven't paid any of the tickets?
I don't know about that, like I said, that all is handled by the Traffic Bureau and I'm not a hundred percent sure on how many municipal tickets end up affecting driver licenses if they go under suspension for that.
Right.
We probably need to sit down with someone from the Judicial Bureau and try to figure out exactly what tickets they have or have not paid, but at this time, I'm not familiar with that.
So, uh, based on our ordinance, don't you, you have the right to, if the dog is not registered, that you can actually impound them? If they're not registered with the town and they're violating the ordinance?
I don't know the, I, I don't have all the ordinance, I usually refer back to them. It is very unlikely, I have not gotten to that point where I would try to do that without probably first speaking with at least Stan and having the town behind that to back that.
I'm just reading, because it says here in ordinance, um, the animal can be taken by enforcement official and impounded in the humane society and they're confined in the humane man if they violated the article five, which they have by not keeping the dogs.
I'd really like to see that video too.
Can I, can I add something, sorry? One day, uh, on a Saturday, I drove up School Street and there were two loose German Shepherds really close to School Street and a blue car came and it chased the car all the way to the hill, the two, the two dogs, and I took a picture as well. And that was just kind of passing through because I don't live in that area. So I happened to catch them loose at one point.
No, I think it's time that we take some action and...
I thought they said they were going to move too, didn't they tell you guys they were moving or something?
Yeah, they've been promising that for a couple of months.
I've been hearing that for a number of months. And even to speak about what she brings up is, I've spoken to other neighbors on this and I'm not calling every time the dogs are seen.
No.
That sometimes people don't call, they don't want to be bad neighbors. I know that when I spoke to these people, people were actually fairly hesitant about wanting to come to this meeting tonight, based on the fact that they didn't want to be the ones here to confront their neighbors and then the neighbor with issue of neighbor dispute.
Yeah.
Objection.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
That's where the dog's at.
Oh, yeah.
And they're under by...
Sure. Yeah, I certainly would take that to be an aggressive dog.
It seems, it seems...
Like early in the day?
There was a...
So, now, they live on the corner of Primary, yes, so these dogs have also been across the street and...
They've been outside.
Down, I'll get down to the other street.
In that neighborhood?
Yes.
So Stan, can I also suggest that if, um, in order to follow the ordinance and give us more power, that we don't register a dog unless we have proof of rabies shots, maybe? Because then you're defeating the whole purpose of the ordinance.
One of the problems of trying to be friendly is, oh, I forgot to bring it in, I'll bring it in this afternoon when I go to work.
Right, but knowing the circumstances with these people.
Well, we don't know the circumstances. No. Well, it just, what is it, this was in December.
Oh, I thought they just registered.
Yeah, this was in December.
Well, can't we un-register the dog?
Nope. Well, no, it doesn't matter because it's licensed and rabies vaccination required, it's not either or.
So they are a violation?
There's still a violation of the following.
That one might be harder to enforce for us because if they paid for the licensing fee, and it was the nice thing of, oh yeah, we forgot to bring it in, we got busy, that might get tricky before a judge. You know, I always try to think of tickets as if it goes before a judge, how am I going to testify to it in court?
Yes.
That one might get tricky because they're going to play the, oh, I just forgot, it was a simple misunderstanding, I paid for it, I'm, I'm officially licensed, I have the card, but I forgot to bring in the paperwork and that one actually could possibly bring up issues before.
But they are, right, before.
But, uh, I think there's enough there that we could...
Not our before, no.
No, the town is in violation of getting...
I wish you wouldn't say that, Bruce.
But not our, but not our before.
No, no, not our before, but I'm just talking about it.
Not our.
So, what's your...
Let's take the dogs.
Yeah.
Protect your kids.
I don't know what paperwork we have to...
I think what you need is, is a motion by the board that they are in violation of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Specifically as it relates to bunnies loose or running at large, I think you'd have a tough time with a vicious animal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this is the same thing and then following on the enforcement is, uh, part of the motion is requesting the Sheriff's Department, uh, to pound the animals.
So, um, let motion sound...
So, let me ask this question. So one of them is in violation of at least two of these articles because one of them is not registered.
Right.
And does not have any shots.
Yeah, that we know.
That we know.
Yeah.
So one of them is in violation of at least two of these. I'm not sure if that matters.
We don't have names on either of these dogs, right?
Their violation of article four and three.
From what's on the records, that's like halfway through. The other one, I don't know.
Article four, which are on three and four, yeah.
Yes.
So it must be the dogs at twenty-two Gibb Street.
Yeah.
Pulled by Lady Morando's.
Yes.
Are in violation of article four, section one, three and four of the family law ordinance. Bruce, can I ask you another question?
Wait, I'm sorry, the article four, section...
Uh, sorry, I just flipped off.
One, three and four.
One, three and four.
One, three and four.
Just leaving off the vision.
Yeah.
Both of them are in violation of that.
I've all three of those sections.
Okay, thank you.
How far did you go back in your records? Because I think I was, I was health officer, I think this is the same dog, I don't know for sure. How far do you go back in your records? How far do you keep it?
These are, I believe, all of the records that we had for those folks that were to deal with animal problems and it goes back to early December twenty eighteen, November, December twenty eighteen. Yeah, I don't think I have anything back quite that far and that's before my time too anyway, so.
Bill's go back, huh? It's the one, article ten, Bert, you stole it.
Yeah, they live right here. Gibb's Primary and they live right here.
That cottage, cottage, very small cottage.
Yeah.
Because I'm on, I'm on High Street and it seems like, it seems like there's noise every, the same time of each day.
It's quite possible.
But it's vicious, huh?
We need a second for that motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries to, um, get that taken care of.
I'm just requesting the select board that if, uh, we are going to issue a cease to dogs, could I get an order from the select board to have us do that under your ordinance?
Yeah, I'll give you a copy of the motion.
Yeah, that we make that signature in writing, that way it's...
Sure.
You can basically get it logged as a order from the select board to remove the dogs under ordinance section one.
Yeah.
So sure, if it's a private, instead of asked, it's got to be ordered.
Well, it's, it's that way, it's one of those things where it, under the court, we could technically...
If we ask you, then you, you've got discretion. If we order you, they don't have to do it.
Well, it's kind of, I think, a language thing, but if we go before a judge and I have an order from the town saying, under these circumstances, the select board will like this, removed and under their direction, we can do that because essentially the way I interpret it is that we as the sheriff work for you, the town, as your internal officers, so that we enforce it, but if you have a certain request of us, you can come to us and say, hey, we'd like this handled and under our orders, you know, here is what your discretion will be under our ordinance eventually, behold of the ordinance.
Sure, well, thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and you'll probably have that with a date or so for them.
And that's...
Just wish the dogs here, yeah.
Kind of like, how many dogs do we have? If everyone's registered promptly, how many dogs do we have in town?
We don't, you know, we don't have that information before us, you know?
So they're all in violation?
Well, so we, we can ask that question, but, uh, we don't have that answer right in front of us tonight.
Okay.
That would be something we'd have to get from the town clerk's office.
Well, even then, that's only dogs that are registered.
Yeah, we don't know how many.
We don't really, there's no way to know how many dogs are in town unless they're registered.
I guess what I'm getting at is, is it a policy issue or is it, is it everybody doing it the wrong way or no?
I think we, I mean, this is the, this is how technical complaints are with particular dogs. I think with this one, it's, these are, these are dogs that have found their problems.
Yeah.
I've heard it from, when I've talked with this town clerk's office, is it's kind of a, if it's a live number, because they can track it year to year, if you had a dog last year, but, you know, it moves out and passes away and you don't notify the select board or the town clerk, they actually will, they have a record of who didn't pay year to year that they will work with us on if we need to. So it, it would be a hard number to put on because, you know, if you don't notify the select board that your, your dog passed, you know, they're not going to have a record of that.
Oh, we've got this over here ready.
Exactly. Yeah.
How many licenses are up? I'll get the number of how many dog licenses are up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Over.
Come over.
And hope dogs have a good night.
Yep, hey, thank you.
Do a motion to close the hearing.
Yes, a motion to close the hearings.
Second then.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we return to an, a motion to, uh, open the Board of Steward Commissioners. All those in favor? You have a report in front of you from Simon's? Anything that you want to add to that, Stan, or any questions from the board?
Just want to emphasize the reach out of coming down the...
Oh, Gorham Bridge, yes.
Gorham Bridge Road. And I've talked to the Paulus Elliott, who is, we're on contract to do this study of the collection system and they're accelerating, uh, also the water and sewer guys are watching it to see if the ground gets firm enough enough, right now they don't dare to dig because there's going to be a pond here that they have to pump out. So we are, the pumps are shutting down now.
Yes.
Only running even twenty-four seven, like the discharge is going to shut it down.
Yeah, but we're just running one at a time now rather than the other ones were...
Sometimes the second one's coming out.
Yeah.
Which, you know what I'm saying.
But that's, that's the big issue going on.
Any questions on the report? And we've kind of covered the delinquents. A motion to return to the regular select board, additional items. All of the favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, I think everybody's signed the bills and ordered. Uh, in your package, you have the Sullivan Powers thing, I believe we had that last week and it's a matter of, you have a clean copy for us to sign?
To sign? Oh, I know this back in the, yes, I do. It's in my food. And my originals that I brought tonight in case somebody was missing. I don't know where you're talking about. And it's a matter of, you have a clean copy for us to sign?
To sign? Oh, I know this back in the, yes, I do. It's in my food. And my originals that I brought tonight in case somebody was missing. I don't know where you're talking about. No, I don't. These are the self copies. So I will get, put it out front.
Okay.
We need to sign.
We already had it signed.
I'm going to find it, but it's coming.
You still, you didn't make a motion at the last meeting. You tabled it till this meeting.
Yeah. So, yes, if everybody will stop in and sign that, that will.
So we need a motion then, right?
Yeah.
Motion to. At sixty-eight dollars a cent.
Yep. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Uh, just for information, this came down to Celia from. The state. New fees that they have increased the cost of the fee.
The reason that's in there is because the letter she got said she had to tell you.
Yes.
So she's telling you.
So we have been advised.
We don't need that.
Yeah, okay. Town Office. In there you have a letter regarding the asbestos from Jesse Stratten. Any questions on that? I think that's a pretty. You know.
Yes, I was hoping to get it all removed, but I.
Yeah, I think the fighting on that is, is way above what.
Yes.
Seems it's not gonna be accessible to people.
And the odds of disturbing it any time in the future.
Yeah.
I don't like putting stuff off, but I don't think.
Yeah, I think this is.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, front walls, schedule.
I got an email from Ted Clark. We contacted Rixon Self Construction and they are ready to start anytime. What he is doing is preparing a contract, which will be on your table for the June twenty-fourth date. And I assume that as soon as the contract is signed, he will be ready to start. Again, you need to leave it open for thirty days after the vote in case somebody wanted expedition for a revote. So that's, that's the schedule, right after the third of July, fourth of July, I don't know. He will be in here to start working on the front wall.
Good. Great, that would be good to get those braces off and get that taken care of. And the renovation schedule, that's, I believe Ted Clark sent that up to.
Yeah, the pre-application is completed, you approved that. The section one oh six, which I got copies in just so you can keep track of where we're at. Has been submitted and being reviewed. The next one is the environmental review, which now we can contract for. We got a good email, which I think is at the bottom of that packet. Saying it's gonna be a simple environmental review.
Very simple? Yes.
So it shouldn't cost more than two or three thousand dollars rather than five or six that we could have a difficult. As Bruce said. And Clark contacted Historic Preservation with the sketch for the building addition. To get their comments. As to what they feel of it, how they think it should be, rather than bulldozing ahead and trying to submit an application is to get it cleared through Historic Preservation, the appearance. So I have that working today, so I'm not sure when we'll hear a back home, but I'm sure it won't be too long. And the application for the grant goes in in September with notification of whether it's awarded or not in November. The questions that I need to ask him, when Ed and I talked about it, was I'm talking to, he's talking to Historic Preservation, I'm talking to the economic development. And the question is, can we proceed with the award of a contract prior to receiving the grant? We can't issue a contract prior to the application, but prior to receiving. So that's what I'm, as far as schedule is, is waiting to see whether we can proceed. Once again, the thirty days is up. And then submit the application after the work is done. So. We'll wait and see what, what they get back. Hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have something to report to you. One way or the other. Because if we have to wait until we receive the grant, then you're looking at winter, and I think we talked about, you know, you really wanna be out there in the winter. The big issue is, part of the schedule is relocation or construction time. And where are we gonna go from that? So Celia and I are talking about what is available. We got the museum at on the one story portion. Uh, we've always got the two buildings. One next to the town office, which could be confusing if we were renting, renting short-term rental there, or the big building. Short-term rental, whether, whether they could even do a short-term rental without them having to clean it up. So both are the only three. Any suggestions anybody comes up with? Be glad to listen.
Any other questions on the office building?
I'm not gonna burden you with all of the paper that I gave you tonight.
Yeah.
I may put a, one page of it in for the donor, if you wanna see the rest, hold me. Because it does run through a lot of paper before it gets done.
And in your packet regarding the mosquitoes, the district provided a map. And I don't believe there's any streets missing on that.
The reason for asking for the map was because it seemed like some people felt that they weren't sprayed.
Didn't get sprayed.
Yeah. So by asking for a map, as Bruce says, they're all there.
Yeah. And the only thing on, on West Street, did they go way out to the castle? I think I saw some.
Now, this map stops at.
Yeah. That would be the only question that I.
Well, there's a, but there's a post there that it stops before the castle, but it's green when you're coming, and it goes way beyond Larry Rainey.
Yeah.
So, well, it's the same post that's, that are over here with the red on one side and the green on the other, so.
Well, Tom and I are going up on the twentieth to Brandon to their regularly scheduled meeting. And we can ask.
Yes.
And make them aware that we want the whole thing sprayed.
The question is whether you want that whole thing sprayed or not.
Yes, yeah. So is that something we, you wanna go all the way down to the castle? I would think so, yes.
Well, maybe they've asked. There's a sign right there where the first little building has passed. One of the junk ordinance violation individuals. There's, there's a post right there that's red, so they may have requested not to be sprayed.
But I mean.
But at least it's on, if it's on the map, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I know there are people out there that want.
Well, yeah, I'm sure.
I don't know if they have any.
I mean, just the fact that they don't want it doesn't mean we have to schedule for spraying at all, right?
No, but there may be, you know, some other people along there, so.
And Stan, you're checking in to see what the next, the thought is for the next.
Yeah.
And what?
I'm just saying, if I need to hit.
Pittsburgh, yeah.
Brandon. And I checked the website today and they didn't have anyone on there. But they are still doing spot spraying. But I'm waiting to see them come down with a full load again.
When they asked to pull in to be in the pond and do that area, cause I see they go by, but I don't think.
They, they aren't going down in, but I've gotta add that onto the route. It's like, it's like the pool and the rink and we're incrementing toward the area. But I need to get that one on here.
Thank you.
Okay. The traffic ordinance, you just gave that to Steve to look over?
No, they've had it.
They've had it.
The reason that it's been here was, is there anything else that you want that we, we talked about?
Yeah, I think we.
Are we, are we doing the, the sign stuff or doing that? Cause I didn't see that in here on the briefs that we discussed.
But the ordinance, yeah.
Because.
There's a note about standing.
Well, you know, the issue on standing. We can put it in there, the question is whether we'll get it enforced.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, what is the delineation then or the question? He didn't exactly explain what that was. He just said, if. So, I mean, I, I think that there have been a number of concerns expressed about that that are more than just saying if. In my opinion. When you let on a street and someone parks in the travel section of the road, and you are denied delivery from FedEx or something like that. I think it warrants more than a if from the sheriff.
The way I understood it was that sign, no parking, was definitely being reinforced. However, the standing option, I think he said.
Standing, yeah.
If, right, and if it's, I'm dropping off this package is one thing, if somebody's in the store shopping for twenty minutes, that's another.
Yeah, but we're not talking about stores. We're talking about residential streets. We're talking about people that park at nine o'clock in the morning, that constantly park in the street. We talked about this at the last meeting. If I went to the planning commission and submitted a permit to have a daycare or some kind of business at my house. I know one of the first questions that the planning commission asks and often requires within the permit application is no on-street parking. That you be able to provide parking for whatever it is on your property. And when you submit a permit to build a new home, that, that's part of it, that you have parking for at least two vehicles on your property. So we're not talking about someone running into a store. We're talking about residential properties. And I guess I find it slightly disturbing that some things are more important or some areas appear more important that are going to be noticed than others. They're not quite clear how to write and file that.
I think if you read the statutes, there's no parking on the travel portion of the road. I have a difference of opinion with the sheriff's department on that issue. But I think as a select order on a policy issue is whether you are going to enforce no parking on the travel portion of the road. If you're driven around and seeing how many cars are in different places at different locations. And one is running in to bring grandma or soup versus being there all night long because you don't have any other place to park. And that, I think that's a policy decision, but you know, if we get straightened out that it is enforceable, no parking on the travel portion of the road. And you, and you write that in here, I mean, I think, I think it's a state statute. It's not in your ordinance per se, but I would suggest we write it into your ordinance per se. But we need to know that it's gonna be an enforcement issue, because that's, that's one issue if you. So, and Steve tonight was, was kinda.
Yeah.
Wishy-washy on standing, parking, and.
And he works for you and I.
And that's what you said, that quality of life issues and that we are his consumer. So that he is a contract-based employee. You know, however, it did say that it should be.
It's not holding people around.
So we got the.
I wrote.
We said that it won't hold up. It's like saving thirty-five minutes an hour if you're not having a sign.
Yeah, so.
That's why I like the intersection.
Yeah, but the intersection part of it.
Not on every single street.
So if.
But you guys are blocking parking.
Right, now like.
Yeah.
So.
But we want us to write it in and have somebody throw it out.
Yeah, okay, so. So we won't sign this, but that's where we.
This was the final comment.
That's it. Yeah, and then we wanna put the signs up for the fifty feet from intersections. We've got a plan on posts and, and signs.
And I don't know if you can discriminate in place of the signs so that we don't have five hundred.
Big parking.
I think we should.
Favor of that many signs.
To be the under troubled areas.
I, I think maybe.
Targeted areas that are currently in issue.
Yes, we start with those, you know, near the school and some others. We start with those and, and work from there, so. That one is off the thing for tonight.
So I'm sorry, is standing going into the ordinance?
Yes.
We're going to do that.
Stopping standing or parking.
Travelway.
Yeah, inside the travelway. And to me, the travelway is ten or eleven feet from the center of the road, which we will put in.
Can I comment? I mean, there's a lot of places where people do stop to say, pick something up that's heavy, where they don't wanna, you know, carry it like twenty-five feet or something like that. We have like twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on this road where people can stand for a minute and pick something up. I just seems, I wouldn't wanna be harassed if I was like stopping in front and helping somebody out by like dropping something off or, you know, or doing something.
No, I don't think that.
That's, that's not what we're having an issue with.
Yeah, okay.
We're all day parking, all day parking. That's what we're having problems with. All day parking.
Standing also, okay, I'm confused.
All day standing.
I apologize.
There's less standing.
Okay.
Article nine, I'd like to see that changed. Uh, it kind of locks us in here to the sheriffs, the state police, I'd like to see that changed to any, if in the future we do decide to go with a different law enforcement agency.
Where are you, nine penalties?
Unfortunately.
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 Oh, okay. So.
So any.
Any law enforcement.
Law enforcement, yeah. The physics, well, the sheriffs, first and second constables and Vermont State Police, so I, the only other person that's around who can issue tickets is Fisher Gaymore.
What about if a city officer was going to the academy and came upon.
The city?
You know, or any, any police officer?
Well, this is county sheriffs, the state police, maybe a municipal officer from coming to town.
Well, grown city police or?
Well, they would not know.
Again, yes, I already did any of the.
But I don't think they would have, they won't have copies of this, our ordinance, so.
They're not going to do it at this one.
No, exactly, so they wouldn't have a. A thing.
See, any of the next two weeks when I.
Yeah.
Try to not be, you know, what I think is the final version.
Junk vehicles.
What about the one on the corner of? Cliff and Church, I don't see that here.
That's not on there. Sent those out and I haven't talked to Simon, but the owner is a white one. I don't have the name for it.
Okay, is it registered?
No. It was, it was changed in.
Yeah.
It's a violation, but it's on Tom right away. We could have towed. Uh, who's gonna give the owner a notice that we're gonna tow it before we tow it. See if you can get it out there.
Could, could we get it on the list though, so we don't forget?
So Market Street's been on this list for.
Yeah, that red car. Been here, yeah.
At least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And every time I talk with Frank, he says he'll do something about it.
Kinda do something about it.
What can we do?
Well, we already found them violation.
See, it's, it's not on the municipal property, so we can't tow it.
Right.
I assume we can find it for having a term. Well, I assume we can find, we're having a junk vehicle there. And that's all, that's all we can do. Because of him, you know.
It's been at least three months.
We've said we actually found one violation, and we already have one.
Yeah, he's said more than that.
Is it his?
It belongs to his son.
Of his friend.
Yeah, son.
Yeah.
Okay.
And his son is involved in it also, Frank's son is involved in it also, so.
Just ignore it.
But it needs either somebody to do a title on it, or somebody to do abandonment. And that's what Frank was talking about doing last winter, was going through the abandonment, and then he could tow it and have it junked. He had done.
I think we need to treat this like we treat every other.
Yeah, so maybe we send them a letter.
No, he said he sent the letter.
He sent the letter, okay.
The question is penalties.
Yes.
So we can, have them issue a ticket.
I think we're going to be fair, that's what we're going to do.
Yeah. What are you saying?
Okay, East Street, is that?
That's in the system.
Yeah.
And the new one is 2544 West Street. And a letter is going to the sheriff's department, asking them to come back with an investigation on that. There's two cars that have got grass growing up on them, and there was a complaint by one of the neighbors.
Where are we at with 2651?
2651. I talked with her again last week. She's not going to move them, so we can write tickets for them. She had, I asked her if she wanted to come in and explain why she's not moving, and she doesn't want to come in, but she invited any members of the select board who would like to come down and talk with her, she would be more than happy to entertain. So I don't know if there's any two members of the select board who would like to go down and meet with her and talk with her about her two vehicles. She claims on the statute that she can have one unregistered vehicle on her property. Your ordinance doesn't allow that. Your ordinance is superseding statute.
No, no. How's that one, Saturday?
Take a field trip with him.
Huh?
I'll take a field trip.
Okay. And what, she, you, they said.
Why does these are her day off?
Why do you?
Comfort free.
What she was afraid of, that she came here tonight, she would say something that she shouldn't say.
Have fun.
So therefore, she would like.
Nobody does that.
Couple of representatives in the select board, so she can give her opinion.
Have you got a phone number that we can?
Yes.
You probably have that, so.
Phone number.
Okay, so we'll try to make arrangements on this Wednesday or, or the next Wednesday and then.
Yeah, before the next meeting, we should have.
Yeah. So, okay. Okay. Animal control ordinance, I think we're.
Is there anything anybody wanted to do what we have now? I gave you the copy of the beast model one. So is there anything that you, you wanted to change? I didn't see it being with.
I've jumped out. I didn't mean, you know, that. Just, just what came up to light here tonight, that we can't register dogs, that, you know.
Well, yes, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Words spoken down, we know everybody, but that's, we've got to be legal.
No matter who.
Right.
Being nice has gotten us into trouble. More than once, just in the time that I've been on the board.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, we need to keep a dangerous dog out there. Anytime the police are involved, we need to keep it. Town clerk should keep it with the dog registrations and for future use.
For complaints?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can build a case if we need to.
Yes. Okay. The budget reports, maybe.
Two items, I had it on to your agenda.
Right, yes. Well, let's, yeah, well, we get those two out of the way first. Okay, the first one I mentioned was the Proctor Skating Off-Season Program Manager.
The Park and Record Relation Committee is proposing to put on programs at the REAP for youth, some of the activities, movie nights, karaoke game nights, football ball, dodgeball, hot like supper, and the school parties, holiday celebration dances, and then it's noted Babe Ruth games. What that would be for is opening the restroom facilities if it's not available at the high school. So that one is a question mark on it. What I suggested to them is a contract for someone to be there and responsible charge of the building when one of these events is going on. And Brian and Megan agreed to act as a off-season program manager. I mean, the whole committee has come up with ideas of what they would like to do there. What my emphasis was, is to make it a committee activity, so that it falls under all of our insurance programs, and then we contract with Brian and Megan to provide the services, so that they fall under our insurance programs. And their compensation is $1 plus any profits that they might make off the sale of refreshments. And that makes it a town employee type situation. So if you were in favor of this, why motion would be in order.
Yes.
The, the one line, the off-season program manager or an adult 18 years or older is required on the property during all events?
That's what we have in our so-called REAP manager contract right now. I left it in.
So is that up to them to designate who that person is?
Maybe we designate who was going to be in charge, and then they might take great care.
So it should probably say designate, as opposed to.
Designate, designate me to buy the off-season program manager, so it's not just any.
With that change in mind, a motion to.
I'll make a motion to.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, that one is taken care of. And there was, you want to talk about that request on the BEAP report?
All of the improvements that the committee has been doing out there, I've been booking against their management, or their maintenance work item and the thing. The maintenance item is $1,000. Right now, as you know, it's, we're up to 23. What I would like is authorization from the select board to transfer expenses from the Beaver Pond General Fund account to the Beaver Pond Improvement account, which has $10,000 in it, which was given to town, went over the property. What I'm looking at was anything over the $1,000, we'll leave the $1,000 in the maintenance budget, we'll spend that, but the rest of it would come out of the Beaver Pond Fund to finish it up. I believe there's only one more invoice that's going to come through for the dollar coming up. So I'm saying that the amount to be transferred would be somewhere between $2,000 and $2,200. So if I have authorization to spend the fund money for this.
Yes, I think that would be totally in order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion passed. So that will bring us to our budgets. That will change that one item in the Beaver Pond plan. Any questions other than that? We've got just another three weeks.
Three weeks to go.
Yeah. I think we're darn good, bottom line.
Mostly good colors.
Yes.
Are you sure of confidence, Dan?
Oh, yeah. No problem coming in under, I mean, we've got some, some departments that have overrun the bottom line.
The bottom line is the important one.
Yeah. And then there's no problem.
Nice job, Sam.
Yes, thank you for watching that.
All I want to do is not get hung with a deficit at the end of the year.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, as far as tax rate for 2020, Celia and I are going to get together this week before I disappear on vacation and outline what it would be. And hopefully, when I get back, we could have a special meeting, because she's taking off the first week in July. So somewhere near, there's a very small window. Last year, you didn't set the tax rate until the second week in July, because we were waiting for the grand list. We have a little fervor because of the grievances that were made this year. She is, Lisa Wright has received a value from rebound power for the turbines. She is going to list the turbines the same way that the Board of Civil Authority left them last year, without lowering it to what they feel it should be. And then come up with a grand list based on that, so that if she doesn't feel they would lose the existing one, if she marked them up by $2 million, they might come in and grieve and have it dropped. So from a tax standpoint, we're going in with a lower grand list than what she thinks it is. If they grieve the current listing, after she gets done with her hearings, she probably will take it to 11 million from now. And then let them see what they do then. Last year, they never grieved the state after the Board of Civil Authorities got.
They didn't.
They did not. They're not going further. And she doesn't think they're going any further this year.
Yeah.
In fact, if you know, you can grieve to her this year.
Okay.
So a big thing is setting that. Also, the water sewer rates, got a proposed budget that was in the town report. Let me finish up on that to see if there's any changes from what I felt back in March as to this year, and then set the water sewer rates. So that needs to be set at the same time we set the tax rate. I'm sorry I'm going to miss the next select board meeting, because there's a lot of things I want you to do for this.
And any questions on the sheriff's report?
I think there's a value here.
Yeah.
For me, it's, I read this in the, I posted it on the website.
Yeah, so it's nice to know what's going on.
And speaking of the website, the information for emergency stuff is there, that you have to click the contact. The only other thing it might be is, is where it says, if you have a question, that one four or five, like if you want to register a calling phone, do this. If you have an emergency, bang, one of those. So I'm not putting the whole, all the numbers on the front page.
Motion to adjourn, maybe in order.
So moved. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, nobody's going to vote?